Having empathy for each other is a huge, huge factor in having an enjoyable, nice place to live, to call home, a community that you can call yours. So all these things that I'm talking about that are good for Boulder, I would like to be here to enact that and collaborate with all of the other city governments in doing that, having that cohesive, regional approach to things. They're trying to meet their basic needs. And so those words are going to come out of a lot. Meeting basic needs, because from what I've seen and what I've experienced, when you meet those needs, everything else gets easier and gets better for everyone.
Hello, Boulder and the wider world. This is the Sharing Boulder Podcast. My name is Philip Ogren, and for episode 36, I spoke with Silas Atkins, who is a Boulder resident that is running for city council this fall. We met at Kiwedon Park in Southeast Boulder and talked about a wide variety of subjects, including making government work better for people, the need to build housing in the short, medium, and long terms, the possibility of creating a public financial institution that is geared towards social housing, safe parking, and sanctioned camping, and the need for more empathy for all members of our community. I hope you enjoy this conversation with Silas Atkins. Programming note, I apologize for the poor sound quality of this interview. The lapel mics that we wore did not pick up the audio, and the microphone on the camera picked up the audio instead. I'm not sure what I did differently this time. There was more ambient noise and noise from nearby activities of children playing, dogs barking, people talking, and cars roaring by. However, Silas and I agreed that the conversation itself is easy to hear, and so we decided not to re-record the interview. But before we get started, dear listeners, I have made very few and half-hearted attempts to engage with listeners by soliciting feedback. That said, I have been encouraged by the many times people have thanked me for making the podcast and telling me about things they learned on the show. It's a big boost to morale to know folks are listening and getting something out of it. However, I have been rather reluctant to set up a dedicated email address for the podcast that I can announce on the show so that people can comment on previous episodes or leave other feedback. This summer, I set up a profile on a website called Linktree, which provides a contact form where you can reach out to me. If you run out of space on the form, don't worry. Submissions go straight to my email address, and we can just communicate via email if you have something long-winded that you want to say. You can find my Linktree profile by typing linktree.com/philipogren. This link is also on the front page of the Sharing Boulder website. Despite the relative difficulty of getting in touch with me, I received some listener feedback last month concerning episode 33 with Tara Weiner from a listener from Marietta, Georgia, named Alan, that I thought would be fun to share with permission lightly edited for clarity. Alan writes, "As a non-resident visitor, it would seem to me, rather than going after the airport, not that I care, but $54 million impact and at least $12.7 million in federal grants that may need to be paid back to the FAA. Why are you only looking at a 200-acre property for new housing? Also, I know it's a NIMBY issue, but what came first? The airport." If you move into an airport area, whose problem is that? The airports? The city? It was there when you bought or moved into your home. You are the issue, not the airport. I understand that this may be the third rail, but according to Boulder's Open Space Mountain Park's website, there is over 45,000 acres of open space in the city of Boulder. Seems high to me, but again, I don't live there. If you only took 5% of the land, that would be over 2,225 acres, or 10 times the size of the airport. So let's say you can have an average of 20 units per acre between houses, townhouses, and apartments, AKA planned communities. The airport could support 3,580 units. 5% of open space could support 45,000 units. Here is what I replied. "I tried not to dive too far into the weeds on the airport in my conversation with Tara. I'm on a community working group that is giving city feedback about what the community wants for the airport, and I've met a bunch of experts and community activists and have toured the airport earlier this year. I'm not an expert, but there is lots to say about all of your comments. I have a friend who calls the open space program the 'vacant lot land program', and there's quite a lot of that 45,000 acres that isn't picturesque mountainscapes, but is rather unproductive and could be reimagined in a variety of ways. It would be very difficult, both politically and legally, to repurpose 5% of it for housing. It also tends to be, by definition, on the periphery. I would hope that Boulder would not try to build a bunch more car-dependent suburban sprawl-style housing on the edges of town. The airport is not exactly centrally located, but the location is not bad either. Even if the economic impact of the airport plus what we might owe the FAA is $154 million, that's a fraction of the economic impact from building 2,000 housing units on land that is worth at least $358 million. I don't have any idea what the FAA will cost to pay off, but I'm pretty sure the economic impact numbers of $54 million is grossly inflated. If you saw what a rundown dump it is, I think you would also be skeptical. As for noise, what I've heard from community activists is that the number of touch-and-gos from the training schools has increased the amount of noise by a very wide margin in recent years, and they feel like their complaints are not being heard and that there is no accountability from the voluntary noise abatement program, which is widely seen as lacking any real teeth. Program note, I am hoping to have an episode later this year that is dedicated to discussing the airport and the possibility of building housing there. Okay, one more thing before we get started. I want to recommend a podcast that I recently discovered that I am excited about that David Adamson turned me onto. It is called Building Local Power, and I will put a link in the show notes. I have only listened to three episodes so far, but I was really moved and inspired by the episode from May 18th of this year titled Housing Is Where the Heart Is. Check it out. Without further delay, here is my interview with Silas Atkins. Hello, Silas. Welcome to Sharing Boulder. Thanks so much for being here this evening, taking time to do this. Do you mind introducing yourself?
Absolutely. My name is Silas Atkins. I've been living here in Boulder since about this time in 2016, so coming up on seven years now, I believe. And I am very involved in the community and appreciate the opportunity to talk about things.
Great. Well, I understand you're... Are you officially running for city council or still kind of in this phase of like unofficial prospective candidate?
So everyone's an official prospective candidate at this point because you can't file your paperwork until August 8th. So I am running in terms of I plan to file the paperwork and do all the things that I need to on August 8th.
Okay, great. Well, so number one question, why are you running for city council?
I am running for city council because I am all about people. I believe that that is the root of everything. When we look at the fact that people need their basic needs met, and a lot of what is currently in place for policies in city government, county government, state government, and federal government are designed not around meeting people's needs, but around policing people in some shape or form. So that is everything from the actual police on down to how you can do something to your home, to how you can apply for help if you need it, to how city council, government, and government practices are implemented by the people doing them. And I feel like we've drifted very far away from the fact that we should be community-focused, looking at the needs of the greater good versus individuals, and that government should be there to meet that need, not to serve as a gatekeeper of some kind to people that are trying to live their lives.
Okay, so when you use that word policing, it was a little different than what you often hear about police and the jobs that they undertake. It seems like maybe you're expanding that to include... Well, I mean, the first thing that kind of popped into my head was like maybe an HOA, the way they regulate with how you can paint your garage door.
Correct.
But maybe you also meant like, you know, when you're filing, if you need a benefit, if you're eligible for a benefit, the way you file for that and the way that can be difficult or onerous or something like that. So that all kind of falls under policing?
Everything could, because ultimately, when it comes down to it, all of those pieces serve to have the community, the city people are living in, the area they're living in, the neighbors they're living in, work a certain way, rather than for it to benefit everybody. There's a lot of things that can be brought back to racism, redlining, other pieces like that. A lot of those have been brought up and talked about already, so I don't want to revisit those necessarily, but I do, those do drive me. I personally have had to apply for benefits myself over the past year, and the amount of information you have to supply, the number of times you have to supply it, the way you have to supply it, the methods that are used to notify you. There's, I applied for LEAP heating assistance this year, followed all the guidelines. I in fact called into the call center to ask, can I do it this way? They said yes. Submitted by email all the forms I needed, got denied. No reach out to ask anything about the forms, no clarifications made, absolutely nothing except for you're denied. And when I called to clarify, they said that my paperwork didn't reach them in time. Because I emailed it, it takes them five business days to process that, and the deadline was four business days after I emailed it.
I've heard of email systems where it goes onto a hard disk, onto a barge, across a ferry, loaded, and then, you know, the email gets... It's kind of sounds like that sort of preposterous that it would be, the email requires. I mean, the whole point of electronic communication is to shorten communication time, so that's totally unintuitive.
Yeah, and I do understand there's a lot of pressure right now. There's a lot of people needing help, and there's not enough people to process that. That's fine. I understand that. That's the case. We need to extend that timeline. We need to note the date that it was submitted, not the date it was processed, et cetera. So there are solutions that can be had to this, and having gone through that myself and recognizing I sit in some privilege as a white says-head male, I get a lot of things that aren't as hard for me than as others. And so if I'm having this much difficulty in my position accessing these, what are other people dealing with? And so those are the people that I'm thinking about when I decided that I wanted to run for city council. I saw that there was work to be done here locally, and I've come to the conclusion that starting with the local and building up is the way to go. Many people talk about changing things at the federal level, and that takes a lot more to do.
Yeah, I mean, I totally appreciate that because I feel like in Boulder, we have a lot of ability to, you know, make positive change, that that's like a model for other communities. And yeah, it doesn't require national campaigns, or, you know, it always feels like very distant and unlikely, and, you know, the odds are against you at the higher, the higher the level you go to.
Right. The difficulty lies in that a lot of the funding comes from that level.
True.
And so that often comes with stipulations that the local governments and agencies have to follow. And so at some point, I believe it needs to be addressed. And to start, I feel that by showing that things can work a better way, that benefits people at the local level, that makes it easier to spread.
Okay, so we've touched on kind of a lot of things, and some of it just honestly feels a little coded to me, what you're talking about. And so like, maybe what you're saying has to do with just bureaucratic efficiency, so that you have a form, you have clear guidelines of what, how to fill that out and what the requirements are, and just to smooth that out. Is that part of what you're saying, or is it kind of more to it than that?
Yeah, that's part of it. I think that's the first step.
Okay.
We have a housing crisis. That's easily the biggest issue right now that affects people. And you look at that and you can see, if you have housing, you're more likely to have a job, you're more likely to have a job that has benefits, you're less likely to need other services, et cetera. And so if we start with something like that, what are the reasons why housing is not being built? How do we change the policies, procedures, permitting, et cetera, that goes into that to make it so it's more efficient? It's a lighter load on the city staff. I don't want anyone in city staff who's already working hard to work harder. I want to make their process easier. That's going to be, to me, so much more effective when it comes to moving things forward.
Yeah, that's a theme that's come up in conversations I've been, I've been listening in on, where city staff is really struggling right now to do all the work that's in front of them for a variety of reasons. The labor market has done weird things to Boulder City with 2020 and the pandemic. We had a huge crisis in terms of sales tax revenue going down, and did people lose their jobs because of that? Or was it, was it, yeah, I mean, people were laid off, right?
There were layoffs, yeah. The city of Boulder workforce was reduced by, I don't remember the percentage, 40% or something like that, because there was a lot of aspects that were public-facing in terms of parks and rec and other areas where nobody was able to access those things for quite a while, and so they had to use the money.
Building up that capacity is really not easy. It's not instantaneous.
Right. And added to that, because we have a housing crisis, it's harder to attract people to live and work in Boulder if they're not being paid enough to afford the housing costs here. Boulder is, if not the most expensive, one of the most expensive on the front range, and rivals some other areas like Vail and Aspen and places like that for cost to live.
Well, so when I think about improving government efficiency, a lot of times, what that really means is like deregulation and like making everything easier and like more of a free-for-all. Are you kind of libertarian in your views here, or is that my way off of what I'm, where you're going with this?
No, I wouldn't. I'm not a small government person. I just believe, I do believe though, that the government needs to work better for the people it's representing.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we are working with elected officials, and the purpose of that was that that person works in benefit of the people that they represent. And right now, there's a lot of small vocal minorities of people that have the time and energy and resources to let their voices be heard to the people making decisions that doesn't necessarily reflect the larger community's needs. And so I value the fact that they want to make sure that things are going well for them and their co-neighbors and their friends and everybody else. And we need to be looking at the same time at everybody that needs to be included in this conversation. And there are many people that historically have not had their needs met in all over the country, but especially here in Boulder. There's a huge discrepancy between those that are sitting at the top and those that are at the bottom of things. And to have everything work together and have a community that we all enjoy spending time in, we need a little bit of everything.
Well, I'll just mention that there was a recent Ezra Klein Show episode where he talks about, he has a guest that he interviewed, who talks about the ways that government's employees who implement the laws, they get, they get not marginalized, but they, their jobs become much more difficult by the way, the sort of, the social structures of how government actually works in practice, that basically like we tend to err on the side of caution in terms of making sure we follow every aspect of the law to the point where it's like things that are suggested in the law, like for example, become codified in practice as expected and required. So that, but I can kind of tell that there's a bigger philosophy here than just government efficiency. And so maybe we could just kind of dive into housing and what your thoughts are about how to make housing more accessible and affordable to folks here in Boulder.
Absolutely. Right now, with everything that I've learned around this, the first thing we have to do is build. We need to simplify the process to build and get more units out there. That creates a natural effect of leveling out costs for rent, for purchase, et cetera. There's less scarcity, and so the prices don't get driven up as high. I remember when I first moved here, the fall of 2016, when I moved here, I remember we were looking for a place to move, and we were examining all of the prices that we saw on the rentals available through sites like Zillow and places like that, and I saw a pretty consistent rent amount for places in the area I was looking. And I distinctly remember that an apartment building with somewhere on the order of 80 to 100 units opened up after construction sometime in that fall, and I saw within weeks to a month after that opened, I noticed that the prices I was looking at, I kept an eye on it, things went down, in general, in Boulder, in the areas that I had been keeping an eye on. And so...
Well, this is a theme that keeps coming up about the elasticity or the lack thereof of Boulder's housing market. And I was, I would love to get in the weeds on that with an economist. I mean, I don't mind doing it with you too, but...
I'm not the person for that. I don't claim to be a, you know, a data or economy person or any of those things. I consider myself someone who cares and who wants to take that desire to ensure everyone is taken care of, to enact the things that need to happen with the guidance of people that know a lot more than I do. The things that I'm talking about are things I've learned by reading information about people that are very well-versed in this area. And so I've seen enough times where those solutions provide results in studies and other areas that I feel strongly that that's the way to go as the first step.
Well, so building housing in some respects is extremely easy. You just, you just tell developers, here's what you can do, and go do it, and they'll go do it. Of course, they'll go build skyscrapers if you let them, and very large condo, condo towers. They might, they might build luxury, they will build luxury condos and large mansions on whatever empty lot they can find. So how do you, what's your kind of thought process around, what kind of housing do you want to see built, and then how do you go about incentivizing that kind of housing?
Yeah, so there's two aspects to that. So the first, and the initial phase I've been talking about is just building. And even if every unit that's built at first is luxury, that still opens up space, because the unit that used to rent for 1,500 for, say, a three-bedroom, that is now renting for upwards of 3,000 in some cases, then that price is being charged, or a little more is being charged on a unit that's a luxury unit, and someone who was paying that $3,000 but could afford $4,000 will go look at that one. It's new, it's flashy, it's nice. Then you free up that other unit that's at a lower price point, and if we don't have, for example, occupancy restrictions, then you have enough people that can move in and afford that potentially. That's just the first step, though.
This is, this is actually a point that Connor Doherty makes in his book Golden Gates, which is a history of the YIMBY movement in San Francisco. He talks about how if you got a couple, you know, a couple tech bros competing with a couple of plumbers for the same apartment, the tech bros went out. And so the point is that you can't just stop building housing for rich people, because rich people tend to want to live somewhere as well, and they will even live in small apartments if there's nothing else, the market will afford them. So yeah, I'm kind of on board. This is an argument David Adamson and I have had about whether Boulder needs more luxury condos or not. And I don't want to come out and say, yes, I'm for luxury condos, but I will just, I will say it's not a clear no to me. It's like I'm ambivalent about it. Like to your point about rich, there's a lot of rich people in Boulder, and they also want to live somewhere. So like...
Yeah. The answer is it's yes and no. So yes, right now, maybe no later. And that's the second part of things, which is that we need to not only build, we also need to build affordable units, income-restricted, et cetera. Trying to do that first, though, has led us, is one of the aspects, one of the many areas that have led us to where we are now in our housing crisis. There's an idea that we can't build anything until we build affordable housing, and then affordable housing never gets built, and people get stuck. And so we need to, my main thing is, I'm currently looking at it from a step way, you know, do this first, then that, then that. My preferred is that we're doing it all at once. So while we're having more housing built, we're also simplifying the permitting process to build housing. We're also looking for sources of money for affordable housing projects. We're also making sure that we have immediate shelter needs for those that are experiencing homelessness. We look at safe camping sites, safe parking sites. So all of these need to be done together to make this successful. And typically, what you see is one is done. It doesn't work. Everybody says, see, we told you, and then nothing else happens.
Yeah, if you do one thing in isolation, amazingly, it doesn't fix all the problems, and then you can kind of point to it and say, hey, it didn't fix all the problems, and pretend like that it didn't work.
Exactly. Yeah. So we build the housing with the current permitting process. It may take a little longer, but it's being worked on. We work on the other things at the same time, get it all done.
It'd be interesting to have data that just, that just showed if the staff, staff had the tools to make their jobs more efficient, how much housing would get built. That would be, it would be kind of interesting to know.
I feel, I have a feeling that's out there somewhere, that there's some efficiency pieces and/or simplification stuff out there, I'm guessing. I haven't run into it personally, but again, I'm not a data wonk, so...
If we run into an article or a study or something, please send it and we'll post it.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, well, so one thing I would like to ask you about is, I think you mentioned that at the Ruckus Caucus that you rent, and I'd be curious to know, like, I've recently come out as a renter. I've always thought of myself as a, as a future homebuyer, you know, and so like renters are like other people's problems, you know, in some ways. I was being a little glib there, but yeah, I've really kind of, kind of tried to own the fact that I'm a renter, and by all likelihood, it sort of seems like I'll be one for a long time. And so I'm kind of just curious about how that shapes your view of being in Boulder and wanting to have a voice at the table in city council.
My first question would be to you, what, what caused the shift from being a future homebuyer to being a renter for you?
Well, it's kind of funny because someone actually pointed it out to me that I was a renter, and I was kind of like, yeah, that's true. I am a renter, which is kind of, you know, like it doesn't take a genius to figure that out, you know, you know whether you own your place or not. But, but it is funny how I've kind of always affiliated with, with the notion of like, well, I'm gonna have it, I'm gonna have my shit together enough to be an owner someday. And so that's kind of where my, my head is, headspace is at. And well, when I filled out the application to apply for Housing Advisory Board, they asked me if I was a renter or an owner, and I had gotten a little bit of feedback from somewhere, somehow, I don't remember. It wasn't through the, it wasn't through the interview process, but it's just the fact that because I was a renter, that was important to have a renter's voice at the table in Housing Advisory Board. So that's, that's kind of where it came into focus for me, was that, that process.
Yeah, absolutely. For me, I, I've never desired on my own to want to own a home. And that's especially true for me lately, as I've really shifted how we think about things, because the, I don't know if it's the final step, but the next thing after all of the housing aspects I talked about earlier is social housing. The, I'm starting to sour on the concept of owning the grass in front of us, how that works. It gets very far away of what is sustainable for the earth when we look at climate change and how things are. And there was a time where there was a better balance, quite a long time ago at this point. And I want to see us get back to that. And I wanna see us get back to that. We can't go to the way things were. And I still feel we can get to a better place. And so doing things, I I mentioned affordable housing being built at the same, you know, starting a housing project of some kind at the same time. Luxury housing is being built and at the same time, everything else is happening. And another aspect someone brought up, which I really have gotten behind, is looking at a public interest bank. A banking institution, I should say, I don't think it, I don't know if it would be a bank or not. That is available with funds to fund affordable housing projects. So you don't have to go to an institutions that is, their sole purpose is to make money. It's money that is used for that project.
But to mitigate all the risk and make sure everything is following, uh you know, uh pro formas that kind of followed their recipes for what makes sense in the current housing market, right? You wanna be able to do things that are kind of outside the the box.
In the big picture, housing should not be a commodity. Should be a basic human right.
Interesting. Well, um, when when you brought up um uh social housing. No, sorry, when you brought up uh the fact that you don't have a desire to own a house. That's that's something like over the last ten years, I've really shifted my brain on. Like I, like I said before, I've always thought of myself as a future homeowner. And um, I've also been going through something similar where uh like it kind of, and it kind of starts with the fact that um it's, it feels like a rigged system. And I don't really wanna participate in a system, even if it's to my advantage, that feels rigged. I I still feel like I I have to participate in the housing economy by by renting someplace somewhere, you know. At some, at some level. I mean, at some rent level. But but I, you know, to like, to like design my life around getting that down payment and orchestrating the the payments for the next thirty years and and then defending that interest that I've put into it. It's a kind of an all-consuming uh pursuit that that I personally, I want to let go of. And and figure out how how ways that I can engage with the housing market that feel like I'm not just elbowing out my my less competitive neighbors, you know. I'm actually in in engaging in a way that's inclusive and makes space for other people.
Yeah, and that it can also be as simple as I don't want to maintain a home. That's where I started.
Yeah, I'm I'm with you on that.
I've come away from that. Living in Colorado, I I only wanna see grass in places like this. And then it should be a specific breed that loses very little water.
Shared grass, shared lawns.
Yes, and that's and that's something that's really appealed to me is as time goes on. You know, when I say social housing, there's also community housing and and each has its slight differences. I'd have to look up each to make sure I'm talking about them correctly. Again, I don't propose to be an expert in anything. Just someone who's passionate about it. And so one thing I know is an area that really appealed to me lately. I luckily have come to a situation here where I can rent in Boulder and stay in Boulder because I have my family surrounding me. And so I we have jokingly in the past as a family said, let's buy a multi-unit house and we all live in it, so we're all next to each other. We came close to that. We were trying to get a house, houses next door to each other, so we could take down middle fences and have a big backyard that is shared with everybody. I really enjoy areas that have that as a central point. There's a great neighborhood and I forget the name of it up in North Boulder. Potentially where, yeah, there's a park in the middle, everything is facing the park, all the parking is around back, so it really break, allows people to potentially come out and come together. Um in a shared common space and focuses on that versus surrounding a cul-de-sac. Where everybody's driving in.
Yeah, there's there's a giant asphalt meadow in the in the middle and everyone goes straight into their.
I've made the most of that living here. When I first moved here, the street that I lived on, I counted one day and there were seventeen homes on that little section of street. With families, with kids at some age level, infant on up to uh high school. And at any given time, most evenings, there'd be a group of a good five families of that seventeen gathering out in the street.
In the, in a cul-de-sac?
No, it was a through street.
It was a through street.
And it was a fairly busy through street because of the way it connects in the neighborhood. The neighborhood I currently live in and I've I've managed to live in most of my time here is Martin Acres, which is close to where we are now. And uh so there's um some main streets that kind of that divide it this way. There's three of them. And then there's uh between those streets are the the little sections of streets that that you tend to gravitate to because it's where your most closest neighbors are. And so in that section, between those two end cap streets, we would all go out. And most, there was a group of us that lived towards the middle of that area, so we'd be in the middle. All the adults would be standing there, talking in our front yards, largely on each other's front yards. We'd have a beverage, we'd have a conversation. The kids would have their skateboards, their uh scooters, their bikes, all riding in the street. And all the adults would be responsible for facing in different directions to make sure we're watching the street. We'd yell out a car, kids would come out on the sidewalk and then go back after the car was gone. And I look at how much work that took to happen, but we made it happen because everybody really enjoyed it. And how much easier we could make that to have that kind of common gathering space for people. It comes back to community. It comes back to us supporting each other. And so right now, we're in an economy where we have to exchange services largely by money. I've also been working on surrounding myself with community where we can exchange uh expertise with each other. Help, just general help with each other. Oh, you help me move, I help you move, that kind of thing. And really expanding on that idea of bringing us all together and meeting our basic needs.
Does that economy have a name? I feel like I've heard a clever name.
There's the sharing economy, there's, there's a few different variations depending on what you're looking at.
That's not the one I was thinking of. There's, there's one that has the word, a play on the word free. I can't remember now.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's, yeah, there's um, there's a few different websites that are attempting, attempting doing that. Uh for example, I'm part of a group called Buy Nothing on Facebook and you post items that you have in your abundance that you don't need anymore. And you let everybody in the group that has an opportunity to scroll through, see if it's something they need and get. Rather than having to go through the process of dropping it off at a thrift shop or something like that. And then somebody have to having to luckily walk in at the same time they need it. This gets a large audience and it's all, it's it's limited to people in the south part of Boulder, so it's largely people that you might interact with during going around in the day. So there's that. Um there's also the, I I like to look at it as the barn raising principle. Where in in many communities and the one that comes most closely about easily to mind that I think has been covered in media and things like that is the Amish community. And Amish barn raising where, you know, as a community, when someone needs something done, they come together as a community and they do it. And then when the next person needs it, they come together as a community and do it. And it keeps going around. And y'all equals out in the end, ultimately. But more importantly, even if it doesn't, you've helped somebody out. And so I look at building more housing, getting more people involved, having more people of different backgrounds and experiences in Boulder. For me, makes it better for every single person here.
Yeah, well, one one way to to kind of uh make that scale a bit is the whole thing that's underway with the modular factory over on the BVSD property and providing opportunities for um some mobile home development, some, you know, to 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 be to be turned into fixed uh fixed foundation housing. And you can imagine lots of ways that, you know, Habitat for Humanity and people volunteering through through organizations like that could uh could really like do some, you know, not necessarily old-fashioned barn raising, but some new-fangled barn raising.
Exactly, yeah, right, yeah. Barn raising is the the principle to build it on. But, you know, modify it for whatever your situation is. Right, it's 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 finding the solution that works, not necessarily forcing a solution on everybody. Giving people some choice even. We hear that all the time, talking about getting choice. Well, if we limit things as to how they're done, people don't get that choice. So why are we doing that as a society, as a community, as a city? What is the purpose of that?
Well, I think the purpose of it is, um, you know, the the the, just to play the role of NIMBY for a moment. If if you give lots of people lots of choices about how to change the community and they can just go and do that. You may find yourself with a bunch of developers swooping in, building a whole bunch of stuff that really changes the character in profound ways that is community destroying rather than community building. So like, how do you, how do you imagine that this unfolds in a way where what you have in the end is is a richer, more highly socially connected community rather than like you know, uh sterile uh units, you know, that are that are just commodities.
Yeah, there are a couple aspects of that. The first is to shift the shift the rules and the permitting process and other things to disincentivize that. The the second part of that is, I keep hearing people say, developers swooping in, it happens time and time again. I see it in emails and posts everywhere. I have yet to have someone show me where it's happening. So if that is the case, if that is happening, it needs to be addressed. And we need to incentivize that. And I've actually heard there was a great example for this, which is there was a development, there's a development that's being worked on. I don't know what stage it's at now. Which is over uh where, um, let's see, where it's in the, uh it's on East Pearl, between Pearl and Spruce or Magway, one of those streets, uh budding up against uh Twenty-Eighth Street. And there was a bunch of commercial businesses there in fairly old buildings and things like that. And so there was a process to buy up those buildings and convert it into housing.
You're talking about Boulder Junction at Twenty-Eighth and Pearl?
No, it's on the west side of Twenty-Eighth Street. Uh and so it's, it's an area that there used to be a thrift shop that that's since moved.
That's at Twenty-Sixth and and Spruce.
Exactly, so in between Twenty-Sixth, Twenty-Eighth and Pearl and Spruce, I think. And so I remember looking at the uh application process and some of the things that were coming up in the city council meetings where that was being addressed. And I heard from the developer, we can't make our money back unless we build fewer units and charge more for a bunch of them. So that that development went from, you know, I I don't remember the exact numbers, but say there was a hundred units that were proposed. And, you know, twenty of those were supposed to be income, uh income affordable units. They ended up making it eight of them in six giant mega buildings to sell more money because they had to pay back the people that had invested in that project. So there was certain criteria they met. And so if that's the case, that was an area that they were trying to build more multi-unit housing and it still struggled. So what do we need to change to make that better, to make it more incentivized? One of the aspects is not relying on outside development money for a project like that that includes affordable housing.
That's where this institution would come in. And uh fund something that's more socialized perhaps.
So build all the units that were there, fund the affordable units with that public housing money. And then maybe the rest of it is developers impending into that because those units are market rate.
Interesting. Well, I think, um, yeah, I mean, part of, part of the the financial model of that has to do with the fact that a specific person owns that property, right? So you can't just, even if you're a a public um financial institution that wants to fund the development, you still have to get that property out of that developer's hands, you know, to to and then so that makes it more difficult to pencil out perhaps.
In the big picture, I think in the short term, it's working with the person who owns the land to say because that that you, that project, they wanted to add include affordable units. And then they did the math and found it was, they were struggling it. And part of why they were struggling was the stipulations that were put on them by the process, the permitting process and the building process and everything else.
I'd be curious to go back and look at that one. I the the way I remember that being uh talked about at the city council meeting where um and presented where they were in that in the process and this was like immediately after the new city council from twenty twenty-one that got voted in November. So it was like the December after that uh election. And he kind of got you know, whipped around the other direction because because city council was then like, oh, we need more housing here on this very centrally located piece. And it was, it was kind of an interesting um uh development for for him, I I think, but.
I remember hearing support for that. And then saying, I'd love to do this with you. This is a great idea for this and it's not feasible. And that seems where it kind of stopped.
I don't, I don't know where that project is.
Yeah, and I don't know exactly, I don't know where that project is either.
But I think what you're saying is that, you know, as you're examining the ordinances that put projects like that into that kind of situation.
Exactly.
How can we?
That's, and that's something that can be changed fairly quickly. And so, you know, there's short, medium and long-term goals. And when I say that, that's in terms of achieving what happens with that, right, meeting that goal. And that's where I think, I believe we need to launch the short, medium and long-term goals at the same time. Because the long terms are gonna happen out here. The medium is gonna happen here in the short. So then we put all our energy into the short while things are building for the medium and have some people work on the medium. But the lion's share of the uh the work that's being done is gonna be done in the short-term pieces that'll have the most short-term impact. And some of those are fairly simple, like we stood up within a matter of months. And so I wanna see some of those things happening right now as we work towards the other goals.
Do you mind listing off some of those things?
Yeah, so for me, uh it's a lot of what I mentioned earlier. So the the, some of the most immediate things we need is people need housing. And there's a lot of people that are, that that feel there's a lot of people that feel unsafe being in certain areas due to the people that are experiencing being unhoused right now. And so there's a big call to have them not be in those public spaces. I don't really prescribe to that because it's all everybody's space. That said, we also can't have people that are making that space unusable for others. Right, it's for everybody. Everybody should be able to share that space. And so one thing that would immediately take care of that is safe parking and safe camping spaces. Safe camping spaces has been stood up in Boulder and Denver, sorry, very successfully, so successfully, they're expand, they've been, they were already expanding it before the current administration was sworn in. That's how successful it was. And they're looking to to continue that in in the current administration. So if that model's already there, if it's been that successful, I believe that
We could borrow.
We could do that right away. We don't need to do any studies. We don't need to do any pilots. We don't do any other kind of testings because we've seen it work. I've heard people say, well, that's Denver, not Boulder. We're not as different. I I believe we're not as different as people make it seem. And I really strongly believe, and I've heard this at council meetings before, we need a regional approach to this. Because what Denver does affects Boulder, what Boulder does affects Denver. Denver is superior to Louisville, to Longmont, et cetera. It just keeps spreading. Centennial, Aurora, you name it. This whole area gets impacted by each move. And so if we're all doing it in concert and unison, it's better. And so all these things that I'm talking about that are good for Boulder, I would like to be here to enact that and collaborate with all of the other city governments in doing that. Having that cohesive, regional approach to things. So that everybody's working on the same time so that it's not putting a burden on any one community. Because that is a legitimate concern. Everybody's like, well, if only we do it, then we're taking on all that burden and what happens to the communities around us. That's fair. And we can mitigate it. We shouldn't stop doing those things because that's the concern. We need to answer that concern and do things that will address it.
Well, um, I don't wanna trivialize the homelessness problem in any way. Um and it's, it's a really serious crisis that we just need to be all in on and and solve it. But one of the things, and I honestly, it just, it kind of gives me hope, is one of the things that, ways to think about it is um you know, uh, I think the the statistic I heard is on any given night in the entire county, there's uh perhaps seven hundred people living without shelter. And um, that's a lot of people, that's a lot of suffering. But in the, in the grand scheme of the size of our economy and our capacity to build housing and to provide services, it's, it's really not that big of a problem. I mean, it's a solvable problem that we can tackle and and fix. That's, that's just like a core belief of mine, like seven hundred people. I I did a, I did an estimate of how many um empty bedrooms there are in Boulder. And I'm, again, I'm I'm not suggesting that we put homeless people into into uh empty bedrooms. But they're related, right? Like the fact that we have a ton of housing that sits empty. And people, and people that go homeless, those, these things are connected. And um, the number of bedrooms, empty bedrooms, according to my estimate, is about thirty thousand. And um the number of bedrooms, empty bedrooms, according to my estimate, is about thirty thousand. And uh seven hundred is like a rounding error
Mm-hmm.
on thirty thousand empty bedrooms.
Right.
And um as a community, if we if we could stop yelling at each other about what to do with people who are on the Boulder Creek path and start building encampments and start uh sorry, that's not the right, that's not probably the right phrase.
Safe camping sites.
Safe camping sites. Um build more SROs, build more um housing in general.
Mm-hmm.
Uh this is something we can we can solve and make our world more beautiful because we've we've we we kicked it.
Yeah, we could, we could. I'd I'd I would guess without knowing the numbers or the math or anything else like that, that we could solve ninety percent of that by the end of this year if we implemented some of these measures. In terms of short-term fixes, right? Those are not permanent fixes.
Yeah, of course.
But it at least addresses the immediate needs of the entire community.
Yeah, and homelessness not isn't just lack of housing. There's all there's all there's the wraparound services and all kinds of
Exactly, much bigger picture.
considerations. But but in terms of like getting people off Boulder Creek path,
Mm-hmm.
like I think I think you're right in terms of like we we could we could we could roll up our sleeves and
Absolutely.
take care of this.
Because the current the current things are not working.
Yeah.
If you go and take a tent away from somebody and make them move somewhere else, where are they to go? We don't have enough shelter beds.
Yeah.
We don't have a day services at all. Everybody leaves this leave the shelter every night, every every morning.
Yeah.
And then they have to compete for a spot to get back in. They have to take all their things with them. They can't leave anything there. Well, if all their stuff is taken from them, what are they supposed to do? So that that's not effective. It's not gonna work.
Yeah.
And that's where safe camping sites, safe parking sites. There are many folks that have um stayed in their car when they've been in between transitional housing. I was lucky. I stayed with family of the month that I didn't have a place to live. So I was technically unhoused for a month because I didn't have any place that was mine. There was a gap between the end of one place and the other place that got dragged out way longer than I was supposed to. I was told it would be ready on this date and four weeks later it was ready.
Right.
And I luckily had a place to go. I had a place to stay. And so I didn't have to live live in my car. However, I did have stuff in there and a mattress pulled in because I was ready to do that if I had to. However, technically, I can't park anywhere in Boulder to do that.
Say that again?
Technically, I can't park anywhere in Boulder to do that.
To to do what?
To to stay in my vehicle.
Stay in your vehicle.
Right, yeah. And so that's fine. We don't necessarily want people just randomly in neighborhoods.
Yeah.
That's that doesn't necessarily improve anything. We do need to give them somewhere to go though.
Yeah.
It's very important that we are finding solutions for people. There was something you said around homelessness and it's really a small number. My belief is that there's no number too small because the number one, if there's one person's needs are not being met, then we are failing to some degree. Because we are in a country in a community, especially here in Boulder, that has the means to do this.
Yeah.
I keep hearing there's not enough funding for everything. That's not technically true. We're choosing not to spend the money in the areas that will have the most impact. That is a conscious policy choice that has been made that can be changed. We can change that. And again, it benefits everybody. I think that's the hard part. You talked about earlier about we weren't going back and forth at each other. Ultimately, when you get down to it, everybody's trying to meet the same need. They have a different viewpoint of how to meet that need. And that often conflicts.
Yeah.
Because people are in very different situations. So what works for this person doesn't work for this person. Okay, so let's find a solution that covers both of those scenarios at the same time, brings us closer together. Having empathy for each other is a huge, huge factor in having a enjoyable, nice place to live, to call home, a community that you can call yours.
Amen. Um. Whenever uh someone says we don't have enough money to do this or to do that, um if you just wait long enough, uh they'll they'll eventually say something about how much demand there is for housing
Mm-hmm.
and which which implies a kind of unlimited stream of money that wants to come into the community uh to to live here and to participate.
Mm-hmm.
And um these two things, I feel like uh are are um you know, possible um you you can kind of flip the narrative a little bit to to figure out how to make these two things uh meet up with each other so that we could and I know we do that in in various ways in terms of the affordable housing program. Developers have to um do cash-in-lu or develop a certain amount of um um develop a certain amount of um affordable housing. I'm sorry, I'm a little distracted because the mosquitoes are got are coming up.
Yeah, coming out in full force.
So if you hear if you hear some percussion, it's just it's just uh hands on on slapping skin. Um but uh I don't remember where I was going with that. Um.
You were talking about how there's a a a statement about not enough money, but there's people that want to be here that could contribute to that.
That's right. So.
And that's part of it.
Yeah, there's there's kind of a there's kind of a cognitive dissonance in terms of like
Yes.
um there there are there are opportunities for thinking about how to use our land more efficiently
Yes.
and make it more valuable in in by doing that.
Yes.
And the the difference in in the value that the city basically gives to people when they when they say, hey, you can make this more valuable now by doing this or that. You can recapture some of that by by the way you structure how that gets handed out. So I I just want to encourage elected officials to 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 think creatively about ways to to, you know, um capture some of that value that our land has, you know.
And some of it's even just as simple as what are we spending money on now?
Yeah.
For example, sweeps. There's been, what, two point nine million and another two million dedicated to that?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's five million dollars. What else could we do with that five million dollars that would meet people's needs and solve that problem in the big picture of people not feeling safe in public spaces?
And the answer to that is just like pivot and build safe camping sites.
For example, exactly, yeah. That's that's to me is the most immediate way that that money can be more impactful because that's a lower cost solution.
Yeah.
Not the major affordable permanent housing, but that's a lower cost solution that could immediately bring people to a place to go, to give them a place to go, to be, to feel comfortable.
It also seems politically more feasible because to me, like, what what doesn't seem reasonable is to say, we're gonna stop sweeps and then, you know, just uh stop there, right? Like, like it could because I mean, I I assume that if you if you didn't immediately have us another a backup solution for where people go, then um the the encampments that are present on our creek paths will sort of calcify and and get more entrenched and grow and, you know, they
That could be mitigated to some extent by outreach instead of removal.
Okay.
If if people are if people are treated as the beings that they are
Yeah.
versus used, not used, that's that's the wrong word in this case, rather than othered.
Yeah.
Then that goes a long way to taking pride in where you are. I see a lot when I am interacting with folks, uh when I've talked to folks. I have worked with other people to provide uh immediate need supplies, supplies to people that are experiencing homelessness, that are in a current unhoused situation. And when I talk to people, there's a real um thread that I hear through everything which is a bit of why do I care about what that person thinks if they're just vilifying me? And I want to change that, turn that on its head because I want to see empathy on both sides. I want to want to see people be able to understand why that person might feel unsafe seeing stuff thrown all about. And I want those people to understand that that person is just trying to survive. They're trying to meet their basic needs. And so those words are gonna come out of mouth a lot, meeting basic needs.
Yeah.
Because from what I've seen and what I've experienced, when you meet those needs, everything else gets easier and gets better for everyone involved. So if we can find that balance, so in the short term, you know, provide a place for people to get rid of their trash on a regular basis, daily, go around and collect things so things are not building up. Give people something, and it's especially true right now where we don't necessarily have the heating concerns that have been talked about of, you know, an exploding uh tank, propane tank and things like that. You know, I've I've seen a lot of of very negative language around that and people very being very, very flippant about that. That's a person who's trying to not die of hypothermia. And so if we look at it that way, okay, how can we meet that need in a safer way, in a temporary way, while we work on the longer-term solution, short, medium, long-term solutions? And so immediately, I think we could spend that money instead of removing everything, let's collect the trash, let's provide a place to go to the bathroom, so we're not dealing with that. There's a bigger conversation happening and it's very tough right now because the federal government doesn't look at it well, but safe use sites for those that are experiencing um some sort of addiction.
Yeah.
And so that way, you hear about people talking about needles everywhere or other paraphernalia. That's not good.
Yeah, yeah.
How do we solve that? We don't solve that by having people move around and just keep doing that everywhere else. Providing a space to do things is important. That's a tricky one because there's some federal stuff in place. I know that that just really was a struggle at the state level as well. So I know there's a bigger piece to that. In the short term, though, if we can provide people with their basic needs, maybe there's not as much need to to use substances to numb what's happening for people. Because that's what I I hear a lot of people have talked to. I have a lot of people I've talked to have talked about that. It's a way to just get by because where else are they going? What are they doing? They're sitting there just trying to live, trying to survive.
Yeah.
And so if we look at that, housing is the solution to so much of this. It meets climate goals. More dense housing will meet uh transportation goals, which is also a climate goal. So everything's very interwoven and 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 hooked together.
Yeah.
And housing's at the core of that, in my mind.
It totally is. Um climate change, affordability, inclusion, um resilience, diversity, all of it, yeah.
Absolutely.
Cool. Um, well, we've been gone for a while and it's getting dark and the mosquitoes are driving us crazy and uh I uh but I do want to give you a chance to like um you know, we and we've mostly done housing and and unhoused uh 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 issues, but we we you started off with some um talk about uh uh ways to think about making government more efficient. Um but I'm just curious if you have uh any anything else you want to cover uh or or final statements, uh or maybe you want to give a pitch? I don't know, the parting shots.
Yeah, I'm not a not a big fan of pitches. Um I if you I want to say that if there are people out there that want to see things happen that will benefit them and feel that this current solution's not working for them, I hope that I can be a voice for those people. I don't want to speak for people. I want to speak on behalf of people. I want to I want to um champion their voices. Um I want to uh support them and their and, you know, to some extent, I am part of the people that may or needs are may not be met right now.
Yeah.
However, I am at least able to maintain things with my situation. And so to use my experience and talk to people and get their ideas and bring that to the table is a big part of why I want to run for city council to make sure that that is happening.
Cool. I I think um a two two small personal notes. I think you got here on bike. Is that true?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, are you? Is that your primary mode of transportation?
It is not, unfortunately. Um I I find that with the um and I'm trying, I I'm focusing this week especially. Um I haven't, I wasn't, I wasn't here, uh wasn't able to attend the Rockus Cox in person because I was uh traveling to visit family. And um now that I'm back, we have free fare, so I'm trying to take myself and ki- kids in my life and everything else to do more of this.
Nice.
And so um I really tried to ensure that today I only use bus and bike to get places.
Okay.
Um it wasn't easy. There were times where there was a large gap between when I needed to take the bus and when it arrived.
Ouch, yeah.
Um it's a big one. And I was using the skip mostly, which is probably the most used line in all of Boulder.
Yeah.
Um other than the regional buses, the KFF.
It's very, it can be very frequent depending on the time of the day.
Exactly. And so that it was a big struggle and and uh when I moved here, that that impacted me as well. Uh moved here uh as a two-person household initially, moved with one car and tried to have only one car. And ended up buying a second car because time-wise, it was very difficult to make that work.
Getting to after-school activities with kids, et cetera, was very difficult for me. And I see that some people have successfully done that on bike and I applaud them.
I have been able to do that with my situation, especially the amount of times I have to leave Boulder for different things. Um and so I I do have a car and I do use it more than I should.
Oh, I wasn't trying to imply, I wasn't implicitly wagging my finger or anything like that. I was just curious.
This is just something I'm going through right now.
Okay.
And so I made I purposely made sure that when we were talking about a place to meet, it was someplace I could bike to.
Okay.
Right? And I knew that was too far away for you to bike to and and everything else. So the what I was getting at is is I had grand visions. It didn't work because of the situation. And I want to change that.
Yeah.
I want to be doing more of this. And so the first step I'm trying to do is not to do little errands in my vehicle to save it for out-of-town trips.
Yeah.
And try and bike and bus around.
Okay, great.
I luckily have an ECO pass with my job, so during that school year, as as or during the rest of the year when it's not zero fare.
Yeah.
Um for RTD, I I I plan to start doing that more as much as I can.
Good, good luck. I uh I applaud the the effort. I think it's really great to try out some of these things in the summertime when sometimes the schedules can be more relaxed.
Exactly.
Of course, you've complicated your schedule by running for city council, which is gonna take some time, you know.
Absolutely. I think it's worth it. And if I get to those on public transportation and on bikes, it'll be even better.
The other thing I want to ask you about is the kilt. You're the you're my first interview guest as far as I know. Uh I've had a few Zoom guests on Zoom, so I don't know exactly what they're wearing below the waist, but uh I think you're the first interview guest that's where you showed up in a kilt. So what 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 gives?
Uh so a kilt is something I've wanted to wear for a long time.
Uh-huh.
Um I didn't do it uh before for various reasons and those aren't important now, but I got to a point where I said, I just need to do this.
Okay.
And so
It's a bold fashion statement? Is that what you're saying?
Um I wouldn't say bold all that bold. I mean, there's there's more people wearing than people think.
Okay.
But yeah, there's not many in Boulder. Um I can count on two fingers on the people that I've seen besides me wearing a kilt around Boulder. Uh one of them lives in my neighborhood.
Okay.
And he's actually helped me find the the company that that I got this from. Uh it's it's a multiple factor. One, you know, there's historically a lot of pieces around um, you know, men not wearing dresses and other things like that. And I've realized that that's a fairly American thing, you know, United States because a lot of other cultures, there's long, long garb uh in that culture for various reasons. And so it's a simple way and the design of this kilt in particular was something that was important to me, to have enough pockets for all my stuff, be easy to get on and off, and it's hon- honestly very comfortable to walk around in.
Okay.
I enjoy wearing it when I'm going out places.
Cool.
Over shorts and and pants. Uh it's not always practical, but I love it. And honestly, I love how many people comment on it because it is so rare. The amount of people that I get, I'd I'd say at least once a day if I'm out of the house, someone says, nice kilt.
Yeah.
And a lot of people said, nice dress, nice dress or nice skirt. And I was like, yeah.
Whatever.
But, you know, so it's it's a combination of comfort. Uh I do I do have Scottish heritage uh in my background. And so this is actually the tartan um that my uh my family is from originally. And so that was another factor as well. Um so that kind of spurred me to want to do the this kilt.
Okay, cool.
And in learning about it, I learned it doesn't matter if you're Scottish or not, anybody can wear a kilt. There's there's no, it's not uh not anchored in Scotland. It's the most pop- most popular there because of the history of it, but it's not something that's considered, you know, appropriate in culture or anything like that. It's free for everybody to wear. And you can wear any kilt. You don't have to wear your own family's kilt if you don't have one. And there's been many kilts that have been designed and custom-designed for people that are individual. There's one for each of the states, I believe, um that have been did at some point. There's one for different military branches and things like that. So there's lots of stuff out there that people can use. And so, uh you know, I look at it as as something that benefits me and it starts conversations too, which is great because I love talking to people and and hearing from them.
Cool. Well, I've never uh I've never given any thought about the possibility of wearing a kilt, but now now that I've grown out a beard a little bit, hey, maybe I maybe that's what's next for me.
Get a flat cap and uh and a kilt and see see how it looks.
Okay.
Give it a try. There the nice thing is, is the one that I bought is not one of the full boat kilts. And so, you know, the cost is more like a nice pair of jeans or pants, slacks.
Okay.
And so it feels feels more feasible based on that um to to just replace what I had with this instead.
Great. Well, on that note, I'll just say, thank thank you so much for uh for joining me this evening, had an interesting conversation and good luck in your um your your candidacy and 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 the the effort. Hope you stay healthy and engaged and that that's a fun experience for you and uh yeah.
Yeah, Philip, thank you for having me on uh the podcast. I appreciate that. We had this chance to talk and and have this discussion.
Great.
Gonna find me a residential pedestrian district where I can gracefully grow older. Gonna spend my remaining years. Sharing Boulder.
Thank you for listening to Sharing Boulder. Please support the podcast by sharing it with your friends and neighbors. You can contact me at linktree.com/philipogren, which you can find by duck duck going link tree Philip Ogren. Or by visiting sharingboulder.us where you can also find show notes and previous episodes. This episode of Sharing Boulder was produced by Philip Ogren and the music was created by Nathaniel Ogren and Sac Lunch. Keep sharing Boulder.